All right, good evening and welcome to the Lewisville City Council Workshop Session, 6:15 PM. We do have a quorum. We have two items on, oh, sorry, three items on workshop tonight. First up, we're going to go through the consent and regular agenda items. So first off, we have invocation with Councilmember Kelly, and we have the pledges to the flags for Mayor Pro Tem Ronnie K. Item C1, public hearing, consideration of ordinance of Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance. This is for the 572 Richland Street location. Item C2, public hearing, amending the zoning ordinance for a communications antenna on near I-35.
Real quick about that one. So it says over 25 feet. Is that, is it going to be 100 feet, 1,000 feet? Is there any? Did I miss what the type is actually going to be of that?
I think it's going to be totaling 105 feet.
105 feet. And does that give people by right now they can make it to 100 feet if they want to, they have to come back to council today?
I believe it's limited, but Michelle, where's Michelle?
So the way it's, you're doing a 95-foot tall pole with a 10-foot lightning rod on top. The antenna is actually mounted slightly below the top of the pole. You could, in theory, mount another antenna, but I believe there's only like 10 feet on that before we can go back. And then we'll have to go again. Is that what you're trying to check?
I was just saying, can you translate? Can you speak up, please, and just prepare everything you just said?
I was just saying that the pole is 95 feet tall with a lightning rod that's 10 feet on top of that. The antenna is mounted just below the height of the pole. You could add another antenna that goes up higher, but once you go, I believe the threshold is 10 feet, then we can look at it again, but I would have to double-check with the regulations on that.
Thank you. Other questions on that one?
Is there any concern that there's boats on this property?
No.
Any concern that there's what?
There's boats on this, I mean, something with boats on this property.
Yeah. I think the biggest concerns about the antennas are how far or how close in case they fall over, right? I mean, that's the only thing I've ever, I've ever seen about them. Item 3, there are no further questions. Item 3 is rezoning of 20 acres at 800 State Highway 121, Lake Vista Drive from Light Industrial to planned development. We do have Tramal Pro, Scott Kirkorgin will be presenting this.
And Mayor, I think there was, I got some calls from councilmembers with some confusion about kind of what was allowed when the first submittal was made, and I just wanted Michelle to talk briefly about that, if you don't mind.
So when the application was made, it was actually before the first round of supplemental standards was adopted, that same day, actually. And so we've been working with the applicant, the developer, to find, to look at the standards that were in place when they made their application, and then what our standards are today, and to try to balance those, and to find a good spot. I think one of the main concerns was with the landscaping, especially along the front, because of the rear of that property, and wanting to enhance William being around along the rear because there's the trail system. We pushed the applicant to push landscaping towards the south, so they did squeeze it a little bit on the north side as part of the reconfiguration that they did to really focus on the south side landscaping. The north got squeezed a little bit.
So the reason for the PD is to get it closer to our existing zoning?
Yeah, so the, to clarify, when they submitted, the original regulations before we did any of our changes.
Which is theirs by right?
Which questionably, but, but yes, their first submittal that they made met all, could have been built according to the original development. Now, we did a code change, and then there was, there's questions about what you vested to and those types of things, but we as staff have tried to push them to make sure that we had heightened architectural standards, that we had changes in some of the numbers of phase and things like that. We can go through all of that when we go out there.
Please come on in.
But regardless, it really was to add, to get a better product at the end of the day than what they would have been allowed to do by right, my person, Mayor.
Any other, any further questions on that? Thank you. Consent agenda. Item 4, approval of minutes. Item 5, custodial services for various city facilities. Item 6, video inspection of storm sewer lines. I don't know how exciting that is.
Sounds awesome.
I love that stuff.
Would that be livestreamed on our channels?
I would hope so. Everything is content. Everything.
Is that the first time we've done that with the contract?
I think so. It's in Castle Hills, didn't we?
No, we've been doing that. This is just continuation. It's cool stuff. I hear it's going to be filmed at a Coldplay concert.
That was so bad.
Moving on. Item 7, approval of professional services agreement with Teak Knoll and Perkins for right-of-way services for Holborn's Prairie Road improvements.
I had a quick question about this. This is, the way that this was written, it sounded like there might be some design associated as part of this number two, or is this just for right-of-way?
I imagine for right-of-way, there is some money or some design modifications.
In this number?
Yes, in this number.
Okay.
Simply because once we start contacting these folks, we don't know what we're going to run into. If we can avoid condemnation by adjusting the design, we're going to try to do that.
Okay.
If it makes sense.
Yeah. I just got a little bit of sticker shock when I was, 17 parcels for $520,000? But it's a little bit more than that.
Several of these have homes on them.
It's the relocate, I mean, the complexity of relocating people that are living in homes. We've done that before, but it is a massive lift.
So I did see that there were potentially some commercial properties and potentially some residential properties that may involve relocation. So this includes?
Relocation services.
And that, what is a relocation service? What does that entail?
You have to like, well, I think it's.
Well, I mean, yeah, we're going to pay to move people and their contents, and provide a place, we'll be able to provide, I don't know how many months, but just we have to provide a place for them, and they'll be paid for part of that.
And then you have to find things that are comparable places to live, so there's that as a search.
Okay, okay. Got it. Thank you. I feel better about that.
Other questions? Item 8, ad valorem tax and assessment billing and collection services between the city of Lewisville and the Denton County. Any questions on that one?
I understand they came in at 99.9 completed.
So that's the Denton appraisal district.
Okay.
This is county.
Yeah, Judge Eadle, thank you for confusing us.
Yes. He'd better run fast.
That's fair.
Why have I had decad on my body?
Any questions on this one?
Obviously not.
Item 9, resolution of City of Lewisville suspending the July 31 effective date for Encore and then our annual litigation with them.
But I asked for that to be pulled, but maybe it doesn't need to be pulled. I just don't understand what this is. So Liz, if we get in this discussion, if we cross over, I'm happy to ask for it to be pulled, but I don't, I don't understand, how does this affect the residents? How does this affect, affect the people that text us in Mexico Power instead of Encore? How does this affect Castle Hill, Chatska? Does it affect any of those folks?
What is the percentage of Encore?
De minimis. Like, we, so basically, go ahead, Erin, you can answer this question.
Sure. So I did talk to the attorney for the Encore steering committee, which we're a member of, and he believes that we do have a handful of Encore customers. However, he couldn't tell me where, and the main reason for that is the map that the PUC, the Public Utility Commission, provides for an electric service is poor. It just doesn't have the resolution to get down to that level. But basically, the history on this is why this applies to Lewisville, which is kind of confusing because we're TNMP and Coserv, right, with what we believe. There's a list of cities that are in the original jurisdiction of Encore cities. We're one of those, and we've never ceded that jurisdiction. So that's why we're part of this. And so given that the attorney believes we do have a handful of customers, we want, we don't want to cede that. I would recommend that we ceded that jurisdiction so that we can protect those, assuming that they, that they do exist.
So the infrastructure put up by Encore, that's not, that's not used by, by the other companies we talked about? They wouldn't pass any of that cost along to the, people aren't using Encore directly?
I don't know about as far as it's possible that they do use that infrastructure, but this is specifically related to retail services for Encore customers.
Okay.
And so if we don't approve this resolution, then that, that rate increase goes forward for any Encore customers.
Oh, I'm all for approving the resolution, I just don't understand why we're involved with it. So, okay, we have, we have a small handful of houses we think are impacted. We're on the board for historical reasons, and we're going to, we're talking about in this, in this consent again item, approving resolution that basically stays this, this increase.
So that we can research strategies to try to negotiate those rates down. And I do want to point out that the attorney fees that works for the steering committee, those are reimbursable by Encore, so there's no cost to us.
My very next question was, what's the cost for these handful of houses?
This is the same process we use with TNMP, with Atmos, with, with all the utilities?
It is. The only difference is we have a steering committee for Encore where we don't have that. It's not as formal for others.
Thank you.
So wait just a second, Erin, before you leave, so, because I did get an email about somebody asking, you know, that we, you know, that we deny this. I just want to clarify, this is, we are one, the city is one member of this committee, right? So even if we said, "We don't agree with this," and we just flat-out deny it, that doesn't mean that some people may not get an increase because we're just one vote on a committee of other.
We actually got clarification on that slightly.
So it's not a vote on the committee, it's an individual city. So if we don't approve this suspension, then it will move forward for any Encore customers in Lewisville.
The increase will move forward.
No, I understand that, but 90 days from now, we have to approve another resolution. And so, you know, if we're being asked just flat-out deny any rate increases and just say, "No, we're not going to approve any rate increases," that's, that's not really within our jurisdiction of what we can do.
Right. So basically, what will end up happening is if you, let's say we wanted to say absolutely no rate increases, that is just a resolution saying that that's our, our recommendation to the PUC. So it holds, I mean, if there's no basis for it, we just absolutely don't want it. I mean, they're going to consider all of those things, just like when we gather all the data and we put together, we say we think it should be reduced, not, not, we're going to increase a little bit and we'll be as much as it was before. They're willing to take that into consideration more, but it's not, it's not definitive. We don't have, our say is not the law.
They say.
They say, it's the PUC.
Yes. I just wanted to clarify that in a public center.
Well, listen to that as much as the rest of the state listens to it, it's probably what.
Anything else on 9? Do we want to go ahead and keep that in?
Yeah, we want to pull it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10, regular hearing, consideration of appointments to 2035 Steering Committee. We have a list put together by our city secretary, and we just need to appoint all or some who member wants to do it, so. Or none. We have, we have all those options. Any questions on 10? 11, consideration of appointments for various city boards and commissions.
Yes, one small adjustment to the list. CDBG, he changed Sophia O.R. with Rick Chauvin.
Rick Chauvin?
And then Sophia, we basically just swapped. So Sophia took a library board instead of Rick. Yes, just swapped those two.
The reason is Sophia serves the United Way Board, so she would be overseeing funding that could potentially go to the United Way, so we don't want to create that.
And they were both, they were both listed almost 14 ways, so it's a good swap, so.
Appreciate you taking the time.
And what's, can you explain the TERs commentary that goes on?
Yeah, so Jennifer, we're talking, I think, is it TERs four? Where we had the?
Yes, where we changed.
So the way TERs was built was that the places would match the places for council and mayor, so that the mayor, how I'm reading it is that the mayor would always be the chair. And so somehow we got out over our skis, and William, you were chair at the time.
I get that, but why, why are we not doing that for one or two?
Because their, their establishment documentations are different. We've got, we've got two that are the same and two that are, so we got three different setups for TERs, for four TERs.
We'll eventually make them all consistent, but for now, that's good.
So I'm sorry about that. So we'll do a little dance there, get that to land back up, if that works for everybody.
So this isn't the proper order in which you want it in, correct?
No, I think, I think it has listed on the form, it's correct.
It's correct on this form.
So when we do appointment for TERs four, I'll be the chair, and then TERs four, I would recommend that we have William as the co-chair, I think is on that one.
Well, we're just, we're not doing.
We're not going to do that in this meeting, but, but when we get to that. But as far as the listing goes, it's correct. Any other questions on that? So whomever, whoever does this gets to read a lot tonight, because we need all those on the record.
William, I know you were itching to do that.
I know. I know half of it.
We knew exactly what he wanted.
And then I have reports from our Director of Public Services, from our City Engineer, and from our Director of Neighborhood Inspection Services. Have any others? All right. With that, we'll go ahead and move back into workshop item B, presentation of Denton County Transportation Authority Transit Oriented Development Plan and RFQ process. We have our CEO, Paul Christina, to present, and we also have Austin Frith here, obviously, to give data when it's asked for.
And can I also state, Mayor, before Paul gets started, is that the reason we wanted to bring this back to you guys, you guys have seen this already, just in kind of a smaller form when we went through the last DCTA presentation, but they're about to go out for an RFQ to find the developer partner for this property. And so with that, we wanted to make sure you guys saw what was about to hit, hit the ground, so that there was no surprises and you understood kind of what the plan of attack is.
Thank you, Claire, as Mayor, members of council, appreciate the chance to be with you and exactly right. It's really important for us to be locked in tight, and we have been, thanks to a lot of great teamwork over the course of the last year and a half or more. And so what I'm here to do is give you an update on where all that stands. So before this timeline you see here, DCTA got a grant to purchase the property that we're going to be talking about back in the 2018, 2019 timeframe. As the board has led us through the transformation process that we've been in, and we talk about setting goals and objectives for the coming years, the topic of the transit-oriented development in Old Town came up and said, "This is something we want to accomplish." And so we put focused effort behind it as a staff to work with our board and members of the City of Lewisville staff to come up with the vision that we're going to talk about here. The first step was for the DCTA board to appoint a working group. It's not a committee, but a working group comprised of members of DCTA staff, our board chair, Chair Gilmore, Judge Eadle, who's the board secretary, and then members of the City of Lewisville staff. And so it's been that sort of collaborative effort, board, city, county, that's helped to bring this thing together. And these workshops that we held helped us to progress a vision over the course of time. We came up with an initial plan, we found challenges, we revised, and ultimately, we're in the place now where, like Paul said, where we would like to be able to put out, and the board has given us the okay to put out this request for qualifications document at the end of last summer, or at the, at the end of this summer. So let's talk about the project and the property. This is a picture of the property right here. You see, obviously, the A train station located about here, and then this says Dart because DCTA actually operates on right-of-way owned by Dallas Area Rapid Transit. We're there on a long-term lease. We own the infrastructure at and above the ground, they own the dirt beneath the ground, and that'll be important here in a second. And then this property that you see here, owned by DCTA, and this property outlined in yellow was property that DCTA also owns, but that was purchased with federal transit administration funds, part of that grant that we were talking about back in 2019. That's important because when federal money touches property, as you can imagine, there comes strings attached and prohibitions about things you can't do with it. And so we have to pay attention to that. And of course, you all are very familiar with your O'Halla development right next door. So the goals for the project, we're looking for a mixed-use development that provides space for a DCTA headquarters administrative building that would have other space for other tenants to have Class A office space on first, second, or second, third floors, potentially a fourth. And then at the downstairs level, there's, think about a plaza, retail, shopping, and place potentially for public gatherings like DCTA board meetings. This was the initial concept that was come up with by the working group, and what you have is a platform that, imagine standing, getting off the A train, and being able to see through a ground level that's kind of framed by glass and polycarbonate, going and looking out into this big green space that's surrounded by food trucks and shopping and restaurants and those sorts of things. Another big topic of conversation was around some sort of regional destination, like perhaps a hotel conference center of a scale that would fit onto this property. And then there's up at the top here, parking garage space, and then also some, potentially some limited multifamily. The working group acknowledged that multifamily wasn't very desirable because of all the multifamily going in at O'Halla, but we also recognized that when you put out a request like this, the developer community may really push for that, and so we have to think about how we would accommodate it. So after this initial vision, we started digging more into the site and said, "Well, there's a major sewer line that runs right through where you see that black dotted line, not ideal to build on. We want to make this as easy as we can for the developer community, so we want to try to work around those kinds of constraints when we can." We know that the city's working on a stormwater detention area, a regional facility that will help drain the entire property, or the entire area around that side of the railroad, and so we have to think about how we would accommodate that in the future. And then whatever we could do to stay away or stay out of the Dart-owned property also helps us because it keeps the developer and partner from having to work with multiple public agencies, which can make things more complicated, introduce more risk, thereby driving pricing. And so we want to avoid that as we can. And then we're looking for ways that we can make the O'Halla development tie cohesively into the DCTA development of the streets and things like that. So that vision was then refined, and what you see here now is, number one, physical connectivity to church in Maine with a green space and pedestrian pathways that makes it easy for a person who might be frequenting the west part of Old Town to be able to see the train station, make it to the train station without having to navigate drainage ditches and all that sort of thing. We keep the concept of iconic Maine building that accommodates Class A office space, retail, some sort of ground floor public use. Again, the idea that you get off the train and it's evident that you're out of place, the structure itself resembles a building that, when you see it, even if you don't know that there's a railroad there, you say, "That looks like a railroad building." That's the kind of a thing that we're, the theme that we're looking for. And again, those other pieces, like we talked about, hotel conference center, residential development, shared parking garage, those sorts of things. We're trying to keep this as open as we can because what we're going to talk about with the request for qualifications is first, to see who is in the marketplace that could accomplish a vision like this, but then also, what is their vision? What can the market tell us about what's going to be economically viable for this project? That's really important for us to do. So when you look at all of those components, what we've spent some time on is trying to get a cost estimate for, what is the cost of this iconic building, this anchor building that we were talking about before? These are very high-level programmatic estimates, built in a time when it's really hard to do programmatic high-level cost estimates because pricing can be so variable. So you see the waiting hall component at the ground floor, the DCTA office building that fit out, and then this platform connection slash kiss-and-ride, a transit term, a place where people can circulate, go zone vehicles, things like that, to drop somebody off at the train station and then go on their way. Total estimate for that anchor facility, just this one right there, is just over $40 million, and DCTA has grant funding in hand, about eight and a half million, and so the gap right now is 32.3. So when we talk about asking the market, "What can you do?", they're going to, they're going to look at this and first say, "Okay, here's what we could do for a fee." That is, just a deal between DCTA and the developer that would build the building that I just showed you. Here's what that would look like, here's how long it could take, all that sort of stuff. But then, we would ask them, "Well, how else could you meet this broader vision, and what are the components of that sort of a deal that would need to be brought to the table?" And that's where they would talk about, "Well, we would need this kind of public funding support, or these kinds of incentives, or the transit agency to do this and that." And that's really the other part of the RFQ. After they tell us how good they are at this, how many of these they've done, is, "Here's how I can meet your, and how I can meet your current near-term need." They're going to talk to us about, "Here are your options to accomplish a vision like that." Or maybe your vision isn't market viable at all, and you need to be thinking about other things. I will say, the DCTA board and the working group have said they want to create a, not a meet-the-market, but a set-the-market sort of development. That being, we want to create an anchor on the east side of the railroad that serves and catalyzes development for the rest of Old Town, matching the success that you've had before. And so what that means is if we don't get satisfactory responses on the RFQ, and all we get is somebody who says, "We can build you a really nice building, and this is the cost," then we could, the DCTA board could choose to go forward with that option and then just wait because we have the advantage of time because we own the property. So what we're going to do is put together an RFQ document that, and it's in draft right now, undergoing final revisions, that sets kind of the vision and expectations. You see the RFQ requirements there, those types of things that we're going to be looking for, and then we'll go through a scoring process. We won't read this matrix to you, but it will be a procurement process like you would expect to see in any other public agency, review the packages to make sure they meet the standard, do the, do the scoring, do interviews, final selection, and then we enter into a period of contract negotiation, and ultimately, ideally, a contract award to move forward with that developer partner. Our timeline, like I said, we're planning to release the RFQ before the end of the summer, and then you can see the other milestones here. We provide ourselves ample times to do, time to do negotiation with the developer, and we're tying in things like the regional stormwater facility that we wouldn't be able to, we understand we couldn't build in that parcel until, or build the, the things that would require to drain to that parcel until that structure is built. And so we're working really closely, like I said at the beginning, with your staff to make sure all these pieces tie together and we have a singular cohesive effort. Ultimately, what that means is if it all goes according to this schedule, it's going to be the end of the year of 2029 when we can cut the ribbon on that anchor facility. Other timelines could come out of whatever the developer says is possible from their vision that they put forward on the other half of the RFQ. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or provide any further information.
Thank you, Paul. So whenever this RFP, RFQ gets published, what, is that a national publication? Are we putting it out nationally, or just in the state, or what does that look like?
Great question. So our, obviously, our DCTA procurement portal is open to anybody in the country that wants to bid on it. We have, we are working with a couple of consultant partners right now who are very well-connected and tied in to the developer community and the types of companies that do this kind of work. And these, this sort of opportunity comes up in those kinds of conversations already, as this one has, on an informal basis, and so we're expecting that this would get fair exposure to a national marketplace.
That's, I would be really, really interested, because I realize that this type of, this type of project is somewhat limited here in, you know, where we live.
Right.
So, but I think that there's probably a lot of, a lot of companies, or at least a handful of companies, that have done this successfully many times in other places, you know, throughout the United States. I'd really, really love to see what their thoughts are.
Yes. It behooves us, it behooves us to get this out as far and wide as possible, and we'll rely on our consultant partners to help us with that.
Other questions? I want to thank DCTA staff, city staff, Councilmember Green for input as well, and everybody that's been involved with this so far. This is one of those kinds of legacy projects. I mean, we've talked about Old Town development, and that map has gone all the way over to the rail station, but as most of us know, that's a little far to walk. It's kind of a, it's kind of a little disjointed. It's kind of, it's kind of a little disjointed, so if we can create that weight on the other end, I think it's really going to help pull the, the rest of the development through the area. The other thing that's really interesting at this time is that the council of governments and the Regional Transportation Council have gone through a whole formative process called Transit 2.0, and they're looking to redesign how they help fund and develop transit within the region. One of those moving pieces that it looks like there's, there's a lot of interest in is taking those COG dollars that come in and helping to invest in transit-oriented development because that will help ridership across the network. So we're hitting at a pretty good time to be able to take advantage of some other capital options that might not have been there just a year or two ago. Anything else?
No, sir. Thank you very much. We appreciate the chance to speak with you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Item C, presentation of Old Town Master Plan update, and we have our planning manager, Michelle Berry.
Hi, good evening. I hope that gets pulled up, but we have been working on an Old Town Master Plan update. We think that it is high time to do this because it has been over 20 years since the original Old Town Master Plan in 2003. We have done the TOD updates in the meantime, which have focused on the east end of Old Town, but we wanted to make sure we're looking at all of it, including the west. And so Lauren Cook, who's one of our planners, is here also, and Lily Sutton, who is also one of our planners, have really been doing the bulk of the heavy lifting on this, so I'm going to let them kind of give you the update on the work they've been doing.
Good evening. So tonight, we're going to be discussing relation to existing plans, so as kind of Michelle said, it's really the TOD update that we're looking at, as well as a data update, which is going to be a demographic comparison from the city, current Old Town boundaries, and our study area, as well as our outreach summary, which is going to be a summary of both our public engagement events, as well as a resident survey that we conducted in Old Town, and then give you all a chance to give us any feedback, and then go over kind of next steps. So how does this work with the Old Town Master Plan TOD update? The goals within that TOD plan are largely to connect both the east side of Old Town with the Old Town Station area, and being done through bettering public infrastructure, sidewalks, lighting, and creating kind of a more well-defined urban character, as well as a dynamic and rich environment extending from Old Town to the station. So bringing those TOD goals into the master plan will look like strengthening physical and visual connectivity, establishing a compelling and recognizable brand and urban character, as well as a dynamic and rich environment that will extend from the Old Town to the Old Town Station. So this is just a general map of the current Old Town boundary and the Old Town study area. It's important to note, we're not looking to expand the Old Town Design District boundaries, that purple, but we did notice that the areas in green have similar neighborhood character and feel and demographics to our current Old Town boundary, and we wanted to get their kind of take on Old Town and the businesses that they frequent, since they most likely also attend the festivals and events and businesses within Old Town. And so with that, we'll go into demographics. This is a demographic comparison for people. The real main takeaway from here is that the population growth was much more rapid in our current Old Town, in our study area, than as the city as a whole, and as well has a much higher Hispanic population within those.
I have a question on this. This dad is five years old, and in five years, our numbers do not look like that either.
Yes, ma'am.
So are we, or how do we take that into account without having the official census?
Yes, ma'am. Since we did have to use the official census 2020 data, we kind of are going based off of both our resident surveys and what we're hearing and the data that we do have, that we do know, but just what we have to present tonight is just our 2020 block-in data.
And just to clarify, part of that is we wanted to compare what was in the Old Town original master plan, which was based purely on census data. We do have annual population estimates from the COG that we're also using and aware of because we recognize this does not take into account a lot of new construction that has happened in those past five years. So yes, that is in the plan. It was just interesting to compare from the census from when we did this, and it was back in 2000, actually. It was the census data that they were using then, how far we've come along.
That's a great question, and that actually goes into the housing because that's another thing. A lot of these multifamilies were not built five years ago, and so don't really have a good gauge at this point, at this moment, but again, kind of the main takeaway is being that relatively, the Old Town and study area are relatively on track with the city as a whole, but that homeownership percentage will probably be significantly less now due to that multifamily coming in. So we're kind of projecting what we, we see the trends being. And this is just a general racial profile for both the city and the study area. As you can see, again, the kind of the main takeaway being that much more people identified as either two or more races or other in the study area than the city, which we found was an interesting, interesting point to, to mention.
All right. So going into our next data point, the master plan from 2003 did do a parking analysis. The recommendation back then was just that the city continue to monitor the parking situation. There is parking, but again, as development would happen, to just be mindful of that. And so based off of what we've heard from our public outreach, which we'll get into, we have heard people talk about, well, Old Town needs more parking, and just because we did the analysis in the past, again, we wanted to do that comparative analysis, so we did another parking study. We looked at all the public spaces in Old Town, so this includes lots and off-street parking, and we also, we looked at it during the weekends and weekdays over a close of a couple hours. So our main takeaway is that parking is still not a problem yet. The occupancy peaked at 33% overall. When you took away the DCTA station, which is by far the most disconnected, and about 10 minutes outside the Old Town core, this occupancy only increased to about 44%. This is a map showing the occupancy levels at a different time. But one of the main things that we did find was that parking near the newer multifamily was usually pretty occupied, sometimes even going over the number of spaces that were in the off-street or public lots. So it is something that we need to keep in mind, that more parking near the multifamily may be needed in the future.
Do you think that that might have to do with it being as close as it is to the core of Old Town?
That's a good question. So, let's see if I can get this video going again. I don't think I can, but anyways, there is off-street parking here, and there's a multifamily, two multifamily, the Whitlawn Station over here, and these areas were actually the most parked, and so they're actually the furthest away from the core. And so it's not just the ones near like Main and Mill Lot that are, or near, yeah, Main and Mill that are the most parked, it's actually some of the ones that are further away.
Okay, I think I misunderstood the graphic then.
Sorry.
Let me see. Did the Main and Mill one turn red?
Yeah, it does turn red, but yeah, that, it's part of that too, I think, also because they have that public.
That's the, yeah, that's the parking garage.
Yeah, the garage at the bottom.
Yeah, that's a parking garage, but I just, I've, I'm really, I'm having a hard time with the parking garage in, in the public parking aspect of it.
We have, our economic development team and our public services team have been working on signing that, so there's hours where you can't park past a certain number of hours there to get people moving so that residents aren't just parking it and leaving it there.
And that, for those that realize what I'm talking about, is the residents taking up the public instead of parking, or having three or four vehicles versus their two vehicles, so they're taking public.
I like the, the other piece on that is that there is some public parking to the right, so in the other building, the smaller building, it actually has some public spaces as well, but everybody kind of focuses on the first one.
And that second building, I believe, is newer than the, the main one, and so I think when I talked to the community manager, it was only about like 80-something percent occupied. I'm sure as that increases as more residents move in, it'll be more of an issue as well. So going into our outreach, we did phase one in the fall last year. We went to several different festivals and resource fairs across Louisville. We tabled, and we had two main activities. We had a mapping pinboard, so residents could put pins that had different meanings, and then we also had a one-page survey that people could fill out. So when, talking about what people loved about Old Town, for the pinboard activity, people really liked our public spaces, so that's, you know, something really good to hear. For the survey, we asked them if they were excited about the development in Old Town, and over, or 82% of Old Town residents that responded said they were excited, and this was over the total respondents, which was about 70%, so it really shows that our residents are liking what we're doing. When asked where Old Town could improve, the main feedback was for transportation, and when you broke this out further in the survey, pedestrian and cyclist infrastructure was by far the highest, followed by the parking like we were talking about. Other identified needs included more restaurants and entertainment, I think mainly like a diversity of types of offerings, and then grocery store was a big one and will be a continued theme we see across the outreach.
That's about, all I hear about is grocery stores.
Exactly, yeah.
And I live on the east town, and we need a parking store.
Yes. So for phase two, that was the survey that we were talking about. We had both online and mailed formats, and then we also did interdepartmental SWOT analysis. This slide is just showing the difference between the demographics in the survey in the study area that we talked from last time, so you'll see that the survey and the study area demographics are also, the study is not completely representative of the entirety of the, the study area, but still important feedback nonetheless. We asked people why they moved to Old Town. Majority said for housing reasons, either the affordability, the location to work or family. When asked who the list three businesses you visit most often, Perkin, Prairie House were the top ones. Another interesting takeaway from this slide is just getting a people's idea about what they consider to be in Old Town, so like, for example, we see Brahms is a big one there, Walmart, which is, I think we think outside of it, but good to know. And then another one, list three businesses you would visit in Old Town if they existed. Overwhelmingly, it's grocery store, followed by the restaurants and bars, which again, bringing in the variety, and then the next, the lifestyle and specialty stores like Home and Garden, Pet Store, Gym Studios. So then we asked what should the city prioritize staff time and money on? The large one was incentivizing new small businesses. Next is maintaining neighborhood characters, so people really like the small-town feel of Old Town, and then the last one, last major one is adding new parks and green spaces, which city is already currently working on, so that's good progress. We also.
I think, I think at this time, we're going to need to take a pause, and then we will come back and finish this up if that's all right for the team. So, okay. My apologies, because it's great content. It's really, really good.
No, exactly.
Just, we're going to put it out there and hold up. So we're going to go ahead and pause the work session. We'll come back here in about 10 minutes. All right, it's seven o'clock, and we're going to call this regular session of the Louisville City Council to order. We do have a quorum. First up on tonight's agenda, we have the invocation with Councilmember Patrick Kelly.
Please join me in a moment of silence.
Please join me in the pledges to U.S. and the state of Texas. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We're going to go ahead and move back into work session for just a couple of moments, and then we will come back to our regular session. Council, we'll go ahead and go back. Y'all are welcome to join us over there if you'd like. All right, we got speakers, we're good to go.
All right. So getting to the last end of the survey, we asked them about housing. One of the questions was which of the following housing types would you prefer if it were available to you? Overwhelmingly, people prefer the single-family traditional, which is what we would define as what's kind of currently existing in Old Town, followed by townhomes, which is the kind of newer development, single-family that's kind of coming through, and then the last major one was single-family suburban, so that's kind of, when you think of maybe West Louisville, newer homes that are kind of bigger, and I've got images on the next slide to help add some, put some faces to names. But one other thing that was interesting from here was the amount of people who said they prefer cottage court. Cottage court is this style of middle, missing middle housing that helps add gentle density. It's not something that's really currently allowed in Louisville by our code, could potentially through a PD, but yeah, the, the interest of people to live in a type of housing like this definitely has us thinking about how can we refine our code to allow this in Old Town.
I thought it was interesting that wrap apartments were higher than duplex, triplex.
Yeah, that's also an interesting thing, yeah. And I think that's, you know, kind of pulling in from people who are already living in the wrap apartments, they might.
Sure.
Like, yeah. So, yeah, those are the other kind of differentiating housing types. Then the next question we asked after that was which of the following housing types that was previously listed is appropriate on your block? So we asked people what was the intersection nearest to them, and then kind of categorizing these, simplifying it into low, medium, and high-density kind of housing. We were able to map it, and as you can see here, the higher density, people kind of prefer a higher density kind of near the main street core and pushing further east, which aligns well with what we already envisioning for Old Town. So then this is the takeaways from our SWOT. There's a lot of words on here, but a lot of good feedback from staff, and a lot of it aligning again with what we've seen on the survey.
So some of the proposed goals that we're looking to add into the master plan update are to continue to improve public infrastructure, that's being a huge one that we saw within the survey, same with visually connecting Old Town to the TOD, Business 121, and I-35, do those designs and arts and wayfinding kind of plans, and then ensure regulations achieve the vision and reduce conflicts between uses and newer and older structures. Specifically, these regulations may include like parking, zoning, and design guidelines, and then protect the character and quality of existing nearby single-family neighborhoods. Again, kind of one of the reasons we went outside of the Old Town boundary and went to the study area is because similar neighborhoods exist throughout. And then additionally, continue to promote economic vitality and continue to host and facilitate a wide range of events, especially family-friendly events. We got that a lot on our survey, that people wanted more family-friendly options. And then to provide a wide range of housing types to serve families, adults aging in place, and smaller households. And so this is our framework map. This is a, a map of essentially the proposed land uses in kind of the surrounding and in Old Town. As you can see, kind of the main takeaway being that mixed-use commercial fitting really well along like major streets and then in that east TOD. And then so we've taken all of this information and drafted a vision statement, which is Old Town Louisville will continue to maintain its history and authenticity while developing as a premier destination for entertainment, welcoming all types of households to a thriving neighborhood. With that, we will open it up to any feedback, any other questions.
Council? I just have a real quick question. Perk, clearly the hugest, biggest block on that work cloud, and I go there all the time. Tuesday, that's been mostly morning at Perk, so I'm there typically for like 6:30, probably 9:30 or so. I've got the two-hour parking spot, so I got to go out, move my car, or I go park somewhere, walk across. How do we think about that when you've got, it's not just me, students are in there studying, there's, there's small businesses being started, they clearly want to be there for the two hours. Is that signage, out parentheses, two-hour parking, is that a honor system thing? Is that just a, is a, you know, please think about this when you're in here, be kind and courteous? I have to think about allowing those people to sit in Perk for whatever duration they want without violating or getting a ticket.
I think currently we don't. Yeah, so, so on that main street core, that is one of the areas where we do see a higher parking occupancy rate, and so the goal is to have a little bit of turnover with that parking along that, because we're talking about that historic core, we've got the angled front-end parking. And so. And so that is two-hour parking, that is enforced, I believe, by our police department. And we didn't really look at changing that or really contemplate changing that, just because that is such high-demand parking. What happens is if the perk has a lot of customers there all day, you're gonna have a lot of feedback from the other retailers who say, "My customers don't have a place to park." And so we wanna kind of avoid that. I would recommend leaving that in place since it's a high-demand area.
I was gonna say also, and I think you weren't on council at the time, but the two-hour parking came into effect because of businesses out there wanting that. Because there, they had, there were some employees of various businesses that, I think there was a call center at the time that was down there, and it was taking up all the parking spots. It's now since moved, but it was a desire to have turnover and bring more customers in there. They come in, they buy stuff, they leave, more opportunity for other people.
I guess the question is, does that really have an effect? When I say, when I say in Perk-
Yeah, it does.
When I sit in the perk, and I can see, I'm there for two hours, there's people with me for two hours who aren't going out and moving. So maybe they're out there, maybe they came from an apartment complex, I guess, or they're just type of-
Well, they could have parked somewhere other than just on Main Street, because a lot of times, I will park.
It will still have much enforcement, but I can tell you, a few years ago, we had a dedicated police officer that was writing, and he was writing tickets. And so if you were there for more than two hours, you had, you had to move.
Actually, it wasn't a police officer, it was a meter guy, and he reported to the city secretary's office.
Oh, I know.
Now, what might help with that, though, is if we could provide some information that perk could give to their customers to say, "Hey, if you wanna stay here longer than two hours, then you can come park along Main Street or along Church here," because I don't think Church has a two-hour limit.
Or the parking garages.
Yeah, so maybe to help.
We're just talking about putting a two-hour limit on the parking garages, aren't we?
It's longer than two hours.
Longer cars, okay.
But there could be some conversation around that to help, I think.
So that's a pretty standard practice in the downtown, where you have like your business core right there, that parking is gonna be more short-term parking. And then as you go out, the parking, you can stay there longer. So if you're planning to go somewhere like a coffee house and stay there for four hours, you really should park further out so that you leave the spaces for people that are gonna run into the store and then leave. That's-
Specifically, I remember it was like the bridal boutique was one of them, that was like people, women are coming to pick up their dresses, and then they're gonna have to walk five blocks. Like, we really need to have those spaces turning for customers.
I'm not disagreeing with the premise of it. I'm wondering, is it really doing anything for us? That, that's, is it a, is it a nice, do you feel good because it's out there, or is it actually turning the spaces over?
I think there's a, I think there, we are not enforcing it the way we used to enforce it, so I think there are people that are just sitting out there until there's a complaint. So I do think that there are people that are not following the rules out there.
Okay. I follow the rules.
Which is, in any case, there's always got to be one or two. I'm a rule follower, so I don't understand that.
Other questions or feedback?
Would love to see if it hasn't already, the SWOT analysis, going together, departments. I think there's definitely some action items that we can take today on that about just work with, work with staff to see, you know, I look at aging tree inventory, I look at the gaps in sidewalks. I mean, those are, those are no-brainers. We can go take a look and knock some of those off, or at least do some planning around it. So I appreciate, I appreciate that one. If there are no further questions or comments, thank you. Much appreciated, great stuff. Oh, hold on.
Oh, well, just-
We have, we have one slide, sorry.
Yeah, just brief next steps after this, we're gonna take, I guess, the feedback and begin to draft the actual plan document. And after that, we'll send it to internal departmental review, just to make sure that everyone agrees with what we put. And after that, we'll do some more community feedback, hopefully this fall at the different festivals, just to get people's ideas back on that. And then the last part would be finalizing it, bringing it to you guys to get it approved and implemented.
I think I do want to add one more thing as we go through this process. You had talked about the Old Town core, and then you talked about the extended area. I think we want to be very, very careful about changing that dynamic, because what I think we've done really well here is avoid gentrification of these neighborhoods. So I'd like to see if we can't keep that balance where, you know, those neighborhoods that are kind of exterior can continue to keep their charm, keep their current status without, you know, all of a sudden seeing somebody come in and just level bunches of houses and put in, you know, whatever the flavor of the day is. Now, the occasional infol of a quad or even a cottage court, great, but I think we have to walk a line there. I'm really proud of what we've done to this point, so I would hate to see us, you know, put the gas on it and maybe take, take away what we've been able to do.
Agreed.
Thank you all, appreciate it, great stuff.
There we go, welcome back. It is seven fourteen. We are going to resume our regular session. I am gonna make a small adjustment on the calendar, just, or the agenda items. We're gonna go ahead and move the visitors forum up, so we'll start with that. First up on the visitors forum, speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to an individual council member or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping a feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. City Secretary, we only have the one comment card. Okay, so the, we do have one comment here, and it is from Mayor David Bristol. Mayor Bristol, would you mind? State your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, and I, my name is David Bristol, and I'm the mayor of Prosper, and I want to acknowledge the fact that you changed the agenda for me, so I appreciate that very much. So I have a council meeting tomorrow night, so I'll be spending some time in council chambers. So the purpose of me coming to visit you guys this evening is to say thank you, not just to the members of the council and the mayor, but on behalf of myself, our city manager, our town council, and our Prosper, entire Prosper Fire Rescue Team, is to say thank you. And I'm gonna read a letter from our fire chief to express that. And this is from Fire Chief Stuart Blasengame. Dear Chief McNeil, I want to personally thank you and the members of the Lewisville Fire Department for your assistance during the tragic drowning incident involving a fifteen-year-old in Prosper. Our assistant chief captured our department's appreciation well already, but I want to echo his sentiments with a sincere gratitude of my own. Your team's immediate response, professionalism, and compassion have faced such a difficult situation were nothing short of extraordinary. Please extend my appreciation to Chief Moore and Chief Sees for their steady leadership, as well as the Engine Two crew, whose swift action and focused efforts led to the recovery of the victim. They were true professionals. Their presence and expertise brought comfort not only to a grieving family, but also to the nearly two dozen teenagers who witnessed this tragedy, and to, and to an entire community that was anxiously hoping for closure. This is a very uncommon event in the town of Prosper, and we are very grateful for your department's specialized resources, your sonar equipment, and the boat were critical assets that we currently do not have in Prosper. Without them, we would not have been able to bring closure to the family in such a timely manner. I would like to specifically call out Chief Sees, Battalion, Chief Moore, Captain Jason Webb, Rescue Two Driver Noah Stroud, firefighter paramedic Dustin Young, firefighter paramedic Scott Moody, firefighter fighter paramedic Alvarado, and firefighter paramedic Caden Hedges. And this is a very difficult situation. What we had was a group of teenagers decided to try and cross a lake. And they were decent swimmers, and obviously one of them was not. The whole group of teenagers then, some, one of the, one of the teenagers went back and tried to rescue this particular victim until she was exhausted, and then put herself in danger at the same time. Not only that, this is one of the only lakes that we have in the town of Prosper, and is situated in my neighborhood. The entire neighborhood was disturbed by this entire event. So getting closure for the family who was out there on the shoreline was very, very important. And I just want to say from, with our fire chief, that he was, he was, he had departed the station for less than a minute, and already called your team, and they were on their way. So we are very grateful. We don't have that kind of resources in the town of Prosper. We're a great community, but we don't have a water rescue team. So on behalf of myself, the town of Prosper, thank you to Chief McNeil, we appreciate it very much. I did bring a mayor's coin, and I've already exchanged it with Chief Sees, and I've been lucky enough to have a, somewhere near, a fire rescue patch that I will now display prominently in my office. So thank you once again, we're very appreciative.
Thank you, Mayor Bristol. I want to thank our fire department. I know they'll go wherever they're requested and wherever they're needed, but that's just, that's how we do things in Denton County. We work together, we make sure that, we make sure that our departments and our families are safe, and that we can bring closure when we have to, so I appreciate you. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Y'all be good. Item C, public hearing. C1, public hearing. Consideration of ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately point three oh four acres of land out of the J-Craft survey, abstract number two ninety-five, located at five seventy-two Richland Street from single-family residential, seventy-five hundred square foot lot, R seven point five, district zoning to Old Town mixed-use one, OTMU dash one, zoning correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the zoning amendment herein made promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the city, and providing for a savings clause, repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date as requested by Deborah Lynn Wright, the property owner, case number twenty-five dash oh three dash eight dash Z. The zone change from R seven point five to OTMU one is requested as the property owner proposes to create two dwelling units on the property, one for herself and one to rent. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval seven to nothing on July first, twenty twenty-five. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above, and we do have Michelle Berry, our planning manager, available for questions. At this time, the public hearing is now open. City Secretary, do we have any public comment? Okay. Council, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Council, if you'd please vote. Public hearing is now closed. Motion passes six to nothing. Council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Mayor?
I move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item C2, public hearing. Consideration of ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for a communication antenna over twenty-five feet in height on approximately one point five four four acres out of the S-Rig survey, abstract number ten eighty-eight, located at fifteen fifty North Stevens Freeway and Zone General Business District, providing for a savings clause, repealer severability, penalty, and an effective date as requested by Daniel Pettis, Integrisite Incorporated, on behalf of Verizon Wireless, the operator, and Cecil Dalton Family Funeral Home Limited, the property owner, case number twenty-four dash oh nine dash seventeen dash SUP. Verizon Wireless is proposing to construct a telecommunications tower located at the rear of the existing Dalton Sons funeral helm. The site was chosen due to a gap in service in this area. Originally, the applicant looked for co-located opportunities in the general area, but determined a new tower was needed. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval seven to nothing on July first, twenty twenty-five, and it's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Michelle Berry, our planning manager, is available for questions, and the public hearing is now open. City Secretary, do we have any comments? All right. Council, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
I have a motion to second. Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item C3, public hearing. Consideration of ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately twenty point one one acres of land legally described as lots three AR dash one and three AR dash two, Block J Vista Ridge, located eight hundred State Highway one twenty-one bypass, and twenty-seven eighty Lake Vista Drive, from light industrial district zoning to planned development light industrial district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the zoning amendment herein made promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the city, providing for a savings clause, repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date as requested by Half Associates Incorporated, on behalf of TCDFW Acquisitions LLC in Winstead PC, the applicants, and Bank of America NA, the property owner, case twenty-five dash oh four dash four dash PZ. The subject property contains two office buildings that have been vacant for over a year. The developer, Trammell Crowe, proposes to demolish the existing structures on the site and construct three large buildings on the site that could accommodate warehouse distribution, manufacturing, office showroom, and similar uses. The developer has worked with staff to produce a proposed planned development for the site to provide greater clarity, to establish design details intended to lessen the impact of the development, as well as to balance the current standards with previous standards, and to recognize the unique adjacency of the Levy District Trail. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval seven to nothing on July first, twenty twenty-five. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. We do have a presentation by Scott Krikorian, Trammell Crowe Company. Yes, sir? And Michelle will help you with the technology or anything up there, and if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Okay. My name's Scott Krikorian, thirty-six oh six Princeton Avenue. Mayor, members of council, and city manager. Thank you for your service and consideration. So my name's Scott Krikorian, I've been, I'm a senior managing director at Trammell Crowe Company. I've been there thirty-eight years. Hopefully I can hit the right button here. Yeah. First of all, Claire, thank you for your team. They were amazing. We worked closely with them to work through C of Lewisville's intensive review process, and we're proud that the staff supported this, or supports this request. Little, little background on Trammell Crowe Company. We were bought by CBRE in two thousand and seven. CBRE is a Fortune one fifty company. It's very institutional, it's not country club capital. Our capital and partners want to own the best-in-class real estate. Locally, we started, Trammell Crowe Company started in Dallas, DFW. In nineteen forty-eight, we primarily developed office, industrial, and multifamily, some medical, and some data center. Our industrial group has developed about thirty-two million square feet, or forty-eight buildings in the last fifteen years in the, around the metroplex. This is what's existing, two tilt-wall office buildings, two massive parking garages, a large parking field. The suburban office market has been decimated by the pandemic. This property was taken back by B of A, and Trammell Crowe Company is purchasing it out of foreclosure. I do want to point out this, because part of the landscaping on the front, there is currently a strip of sixteen thousand square feet that runs along the frontage road of one twenty-one. We're almost, we're putting thirty-one thousand square feet of landscaping up front. Oh, you know what? This is the old presentation, let me jump over here. So as we worked with Richard and Michelle, it was clear the parameters for the PD. Make it look beautiful, push it away from the lake and the jogging trail, and create a green screen to obstruct the view of the project along that trail, so you can't see in the back of the project. So I'm gonna jump around here on this real quick. So the first thing we did is we wanted to make the exterior of it look beautiful. So there are, there's three hundred and sixty percent of total, there's three hundred and sixty increase percent of the total brick requirement. Let me give you a picture of what that looks like. So similar product is currently there, but we dressed up all the entries in the middle of the building. Drive up, it feels like an office building. There's front parking, the back is hidden. The design enhancements is brick along those front entries, squared off by form liners. There's glass all across the front. Onings above that glass, you can see that as you look at these onings right here. Brick entry onings, dark brown accent lighting. This is, this is a Shadow Bay building, which means there's more things performed in the warehouse. For instance, it can be a hundred percent, a hundred percent air-conditioned type, it could be more technology. This is also for employers who want that visibility to attract that employer, employee, excuse me. So we think that this is gonna be much more higher image. Let me jump to, so when we pushed, we pushed the project to the front to stay away from the jogging trail, but we still have a hundred and seventy-six point five percent more landscaping than what's existing. This is the details more along the trail. There is a fifteen-foot minimum easement. The average along the jogging trail is twenty-two feet, the deepest point is fifty feet. There's a hundred and seventy-one trees, and there's heavy, thick vegetation underneath. So this represents about two hundred and twelve percent of the required trees. And probably the best way to really view this is we put together some images reflect what it will look like on the trail in year one, year five, and year ten. So as you're jogging down the trail, once the buildings are up- So as you're jogging down the trail, once the buildings are up and it's open, this is year one, you'll see it obscures the back end of the project. Year five, I mean, it's, obviously, the screening is more intense. And this is year 10. As the trees matured, it created few corridors underneath the trees. So Richard and Michelle suggested we add shrubs under the trees to add additional screening, which you can see what that looks like there. This is across the lake upon when we deliver. This is in year five. This is in year 10. This is at the, what's going to be, I think, a beer garden going in the future. This is what's existing. You can see the parking garage, the six-story parking garage as it's across, almost completely across the way. You really can't see the truck court in the back. You can see the side of the building, and you can see some of the landscape as it's going to be up against the building, or, and then that's in year five. That's in year 10. So on Lake Vista 121, this is actually the corner. We're going to maintain those trees that are existing. This is in year five. And this is in year 10. So this, I actually gave this presentation right before the 4th of July to P&amp;Z. But we've spent, obviously, a lot of time, Claire, with your team, and working through the PD, and to give the Sea of Louisville assurances of the design quality, and we're proud the staff and P&amp;Z voted with support. Thank you. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, any questions?
I'm good.
Okay.
I had some, but they've been answered. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I was going to make one comment, because I, one of my biggest concerns has to do with the traffic, the truck traffic. I understand that the traffic itself is going to be lesser intensity than it would be for, you know, peak office traffic. Did you say something? Oh, okay. Sorry. But I am worried about those trucks trying to turn out onto the frontage road. I did notice that there looks like you've taken one of those driveways out. So that makes me feel a little bit better, because what I'm looking at, there's three driveways onto the frontage road, and now there's only two. Did I get that right?
Is that right, Colleen? We actually had the plan. We can put it back up. Oh, here we go. Yeah.
That is correct. There will be only two driveways on State, or the Sam Rayburn Tollway access road. They are providing, and they did provide a traffic impact analysis that our engineering team did review, and they are making some adjustments, but overall, we feel like this will work in terms of traffic.
Are there going to be any, is the traffic study recommending any acceleration lanes? I'm just worried about trucks turning onto, one, they're going to, they're going to be taking a right onto the service road. They're going to be coming out into multiple lanes of traffic, because they're going to have to in order to make that right turn. But then, like, just accelerating, I'm just worried about people coming down that frontage road, and then there's a truck that's just pulled out. I'm just worried about, you know, are we going to generate a situation where we've got some problems?
Yes, and so there were three main recommendations from the traffic study. Those were to install the right turn deceleration lanes, so as you're coming into the site, and then to look at sightlines as you're exiting, just to make sure that you can look left and right, and so you can see the traffic. So it's really more about ensuring sightline visibility than having an acceleration lane. And then the third one was to review the signal timing at the light at Sam Rayburn Tollway and Lake Vista Drive, which is really something that the city will do and that we're aware of, so we will look into that.
Okay. Particularly, I was worried about, you know, there's a driveway that's onto the service road, and it comes out onto the service road almost right where the lane for the Texas U-turn starts. I'm really worried about trucks trying to come out of that driveway and cut across the whole frontage road. Is there a way that we might be able to prevent that movement?
That did not come up in the traffic impact analysis review, but that's certainly something I can talk to our traffic engineer and our engineering department about.
Okay. I mean, I would, I think it would just be a whole much, it would be so much safer if the trucks, if they need to go the opposite direction on 121, if they would come out onto Lake Vista and go through the light to take that left versus trying to cut across the whole frontage road to catch that Texas U-turn. If we can somehow work that in, that would make me feel a lot better.
One comment I would make, we've had similar issues with these Texas U-turns and driveways being fairly close. The service road is owned and operated by TaxDOT, and we've had similar issues in the past, and TaxDOT has been reluctant to allow any kind of barrier that would keep people from turning into that U-turn lane. So I guess all I would say was, you know, we'll certainly visit with TaxDOT about that and see if there's something that they would recommend, but our batting record with TaxDOT on these types of issues is not very high.
Yeah, and I'm not necessarily asking for a physical barrier. What I'm asking for is for a, I know in the past, we've worked with, you know, a developer that comes in, and we say, okay, well, we don't want this certain traffic on this road. Can you have the trucks exit this way instead? And that, and that goes into, I don't know if that's incorporated into their PD or their zoning, or I'm not quite sure exactly how we've worked that, but I know we have done that on other projects.
And we've done that here. We are, we put signs up, we do not want trucks entering onto Lake Vista to go right, though that clearly would solve your issue with going out in the frontage road and then going to U-turn if it went all the way back to the other street and turned, because there's a light there.
There is at the service road, yes.
Yeah, so we're trying to, we were trying to keep trucks from actually entering Lake Vista and going right. Instead, we wanted them to go left, so.
Is there a way to, I'm sorry, is there a way to funnel the truck traffic, the entrance? The entrance, I don't think is going to be as big of a problem coming in to the area, but having them exit Lake Vista, period?
Oh, have them exit Lake Vista?
Yeah, so that it, they're not exiting in front of.
Right now, we have them exiting and only going left, so can't go right, can only go left, head to the light, if you're exiting. Does that make sense?
On Lake Vista.
On Lake Vista.
On Lake Vista, yeah.
Yeah, which is, yeah, which is what I think Councilman McGreen is.
They would do anyway.
Yeah, Councilman McGreen is advocating for that. She wants traffic coming out.
Yeah, but what Ronnie is suggesting is.
I'm suggesting that.
We have all the exits.
All the exit. The truck, the truck traffic, if we're talking about the huge trucks and people flying down the service road, is have these, this isn't, it's okay to enter on these drives, but when they're exiting, the safer way would be to dedicate or funnel the trucks exit through the Lake Vista drive area.
Is there a reason that you're suggesting that there's no rights on Lake Vista?
Yeah, we didn't want, they, this.
That was a staff suggestion, actually, because we didn't want the trucks to be going around Lake Vista and traveling on local roads. We wanted to funnel them to where they were ultimately going, which was the highway as soon as possible.
I mean, I have to imagine most of them are going to be heading directly to the highway anyway.
Yes, we imagine so, too.
They don't want to, they don't want to drive on our local streets either.
But we're officially, you know, putting up signs saying no trucks going right.
So are you looking to add language to this tonight, or are you just asking for a commitment from Trammell Crowe to advocate for signage that directs onto Lake Vista?
I mean, I would be interested to hear in what Trammell Crowe has to say about that. I mean, are you, is that something that you're willing to commit to?
Well, I think Lake Vista, it's a, it's a really good execution for them to go. There's nothing, if you look at the site plan, there's nothing there between that exit. You're talking about on Lake Vista, right? We went, we were originally talking about the frontage road. Now we're talking about Lake Vista. That, that exit going left there solves your problem.
Yes, it does.
And, and so, you know, if I, if you're a truck and that traffic is really busy, the nice thing is you have a stop sign that stops there, and it allows all the traffic to slow down and come to a stop, and it's easier for people to maneuver. Now then, if a truck is having problems getting across there to get to the Texas U-turn, they have Lake Vista to go left on and go, and go to the signals. So I think, I think it, it works well for the way it's, the way it's designed.
Okay, so I guess what I'm hearing you saying is that you feel like there's probably no need to, to add any, any language to the PD that says that we're going to prohibit truck traffic from exiting onto the service road and taking the U-turn, that we're going to funnel them out to Lake Vista instead.
I think that would not be beneficial for all of us. I think truck traffic exiting as fast as possible onto the frontage road, that's what the frontage road is designed for. And so I think it would not be beneficial for, for all of us if we said, no truck traffic onto, onto the frontage road.
I'm not necessarily worried about truck traffic on the frontage road. I don't want them to go try to take that U-turn, and I'm, I'm not, I don't know which way they would be going, but it seems like that would be like a beaten path.
You're concerned about them making it a cut over to the Texas U-turn?
Would this be something that if we saw regular issues there, that we could come back and, and make some changes, or would we be stuck?
That was the next question I had. Can we go back later and say, you know, we've had several accidents here or whatever, we want to, we want to restrict this turning movement out of this driveway?
So how, how would we do that? Would we?
So it wouldn't be through the PD at that point in time, right?
Right.
Because the PD wouldn't speak to it, and so I'm not sure what it could be done, since that's a private driveway onto a TaxDOT roadway.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm struggling to figure out how we would enforce that.
Because it, because it's a private, it's a private drive. Yeah.
I mean.
Although I think if you have enough of these, the building and the facility would want to look to find a safer way to do it regardless of what we want.
I feel like it's probably going to be a lot easier for them to, to exit on Lake Vista anyway, because that, the service road backs up there.
And we, and we made it so that both buildings, or all three buildings could exit that, Lake Vista, you could see where you could go left there.
Yeah. You've got two different spots.
So if it became a problem, I mean, trucks not going to want to stick their nose out there either if they feel like they're going to get stuck or.
Kristin.
Because people are not going to let them in.
It is 400, it's approximately roughly 400 feet from that driveway to where the Texas U-turn is, just to give a sense of the scale and distance there.
I mean, it looks like the taper for that Texas U-turn starts pretty much immediately where that driveway is.
It would be, the taper does, it's maybe 100 feet from, for where the taper starts. And then where you actually have the U-turn kind of pull away and separate, it's about 400.
Are you looking at existing driveways? Are you looking at?
The proposed driveway is about midway between the two existing driveways.
Yeah.
So that's where I'm measuring from.
Yeah.
Does it start tapering here?
No, further back. Keep going.
Right there. Yep.
And is there an exit over here to the left? Is there an exit coming off of Sam Rayburn onto?
No, it's back, it's, there's a light back there.
No, no, there's not an exit there.
Yes, there's a, there's an intersection that's just underneath that, and it's a light.
There's an on-ramp there, and I think there's an on-ramp right past that intersection.
It's pretty wide over there. I mean, you've got multiple lanes of traffic, and I don't, and the sightlines are really good, so, but I, you know, speed does, speed does, because it's wide and good sightlines, speed can be an issue. I'm of the opinion, though, that they have Lake Vista, and they've got professional drivers. Might as well. I, I don't, I don't feel like we need to necessarily try and find some language to add to the PD at this point.
I mean, if there's really nothing that we can add in there that would help, I just, I just wanted to put that concern out there.
That's fair.
The loading docks are all in the rear of the.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And each of those little squares is a single dock, is that right?
Right. I would think that.
Or is that?
Yeah, yeah. Each one of those squares that you see in there are, are dock doors.
Is that an actual, or is that a?
That's, that's it.
It is pretty much an actual, so they are very limited in the amount of dock doors that they can have based on these PD regulations. So what you see on there, they could shift the position of those along those back walls, but they may only add one more to each building than what you see on this exhibit.
So as a truck driver, if I was a truck driver, I would think that it would be a lot easier, the flow going out Lake Vista as it stands already. That's going to be a natural flow for them.
I don't think there's going to be as much traffic on Lake Vista, that's correct.
Yeah.
And I will say, our intent, and I think what y'all's intent are, what we would like there is that this really is going to be higher finish product, and so it's going to be more, more employees, less trucking intensive, and that really is, I mean, we're, this is a very expensive product we're putting there, and it requires higher rents, and it requires, so that means more finish out, more tenant improvements. And so our hope, and if you go to buildings like this, for instance, that, that are higher finished, they really have fewer trucks, and that really is what, I think that's really, I mean, we have to have that in order for this to be a success. That's our goal.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah, I would just comment, I would, I think when this came through, I don't think anybody thought that this was what this is going to be, so I appreciate the fact that you've got, having an architecture and construction background. I appreciate the fact that you guys put a lot of thought into this. I mean, you thought about almost everything, so I think that says a lot that what Trammell Crowe has done for this, because this could not, could have gone way worse. So I, this is a great, I think, almost a better product than what's sitting on the ground right now.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Krikorian, I think, I think you've gotten all our questions answered. Public hearing is now open. There are no public comments or any further comments. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Counsel, entertain a motion.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second. I've moved to approve in a second. Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. All right. Item E, consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council, will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a member of the public so requests for a member of the public to request the removal of an item. A speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. I have no e-commerce or speaker cards at this time, so counsel, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item F10, regular hearing, consideration of appointments to the 2035 Steering Committee. The City of Louisville is beginning the process of updating its long-range comprehensive plan through the development of the Louisville 2035 Vision Plan. The plan will help guide the city's growth, development, and quality of life for the next decade. One of the steps in this process is to form a steering committee made up of engaged residents who will assist in developing the plan over the next 18 months. Committee members will participate in public meetings, serve on focused subcommittees, represent diverse community perspectives, and help promote the planning process. At the July 7th, 2025 City Council meeting, all applicants to the 2035 Steering Committee were appointed by the council. Due to continued interest expressed by residents wishing to serve on the committee, the council extended the application deadline to July 18th, 2025 at 5:00 p.m. It's recommended that the City Council consider the additional appointments to the 2035 Steering Committee. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to appoint all additional applicants to the 2035. Move to appoint all additional applicants to the 2035 Steering Committee.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Very excited that we are doubling the amount of participants from the 2025 plan to the 2035 and I'm also doubly excited that we've accepted everyone who showed an interest, expressed an interest and filled out that form. So very excited to see what they come up with. I know when we did the last plan, it was, it was amazing and, and it was groundbreaking for our city and I think this will continue that trend because we've got a lot of great input from a lot of folks. So I, I hope you all put in good work because we're going to, we're going to make you. All right. Next up, we have item 11, consideration of appointments to various city boards, commissions, and committees. Various terms of office on the city's boards, commissions, and committees were set to expire on June 30th, 2025. Due to the runoff election, the initiation of the board-commission committee appointment process was postponed to allow the new council member place number four to participate. And board commissions, committee members are continuing to serve through July 31st, 2025. The process was initiated at the June 16th, 2025 City Council meeting and city council subcommittees were created. The city council's subcommittees will provide their recommendations for appointments to the various boards, commissions, and committees, and the city council will engage in discussion, consideration, and appointment to the various boards, commissions, and committees. It's recommended that the city council proceed with the appointments to various city boards, commissions, and committees as set forth in the caption above. And counsel, I'll entertain any comments, discussion, or a motion.
I'll motion to appoint the following board-commission committee members to two-year terms unless otherwise noted.
I have a motion and a second. And now we'll, we'll take it back because we need to, we need the whole list there written off, so.
Okay, here we go. Animal Services Advisory Committee, reappoint Ronnie Cade to place one. Reappoint David Margulies to place three. Reappoint Don Harden to place five. Reappoint Kimberly Milik Highlandfield to place seven. Arts Advisory Board, appoint Rebecca Rector to place one. Place two will remain vacant as of now. Reappoint Jennifer Austin to place three. Appoint Hannah Bowen to place four for the remainder of the term. Appoint Michael Valentine to place five. Reappoint Ken Purcell to place seven. And reappoint Christine Martin to place nine. Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, reappoint Adora Butler to place one. Appoint Jay Scott to place three. Appoint Jocelyn McMurray to place five. Appoint Rick Chauvin to place seven. Lewisville Parks and Library Development Corporation, reappoint TJ Gilmore to place one. Reappoint Elaine Borkart to place two. Reappoint Karen Locke to place three. Reappoint Ronnie Cade to place four. Appoint Lonnie Tipton to place five. Reappoint William Meredith to place six. Appoint Zachary Manuel to place seven. The Library Board, appoint Sophia Anwar to place number one. Appoint Brian Marvel to place number three. Appoint Ali Ravjani to place number five. Reappoint Zachary Manuel to place number seven. Old Town Design Review Committee, reappoint Amy Puckett to place number one. Reappoint Odin Klack to place number three. Appoint Ariana King to place five. Park Board, reappoint Angela LeWallen to place number one. Reappoint Sherri Brennan to place number three. Reappoint Julia Sykes to place number five. Appoint Jeff Woods to place number seven. Reappoint Elaine Borkart to place number nine. Planning and Doning Commission, reappoint Jack Tidwell, place number two. Reappoint Rick Llewellyn to place number four. Reappoint Aram Ali to place number six. Zoning Board of Adjustment, reappoint Kimberly Turner to alternate place number one. Appoint Andrew McFessel to alternate place number two for the remainder of the term. Appoint Joshua Channon to place number one. Reappoint Mary Carmen Esteso to place number three. Reappoint Rick Llewellyn to place number five. Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number One, reappoint Bob Troyer to place number one. Reappoint William Meredith to place number three. Reappoint Ronnie Cade to place number five. And designate William Meredith as Service Chairman effective January 1, 2026. Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Two, reappoint William Meredith to place number one. Reappoint Ronnie Cade to place number three. Reappoint Kristen Green to place number five. And designate Patrick Kelly to Service Chairman effective October 20th, 2025. Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Three, reappoint TJ Gilmore to place number two. Appoint Lonnie Tipton to place number four. And designate Bob Troyer to Service Chairman effective December 3rd, 2025. Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Four, appoint TJ Gilmore to place number one. Reappoint Bob Troyer to place number two. Reappoint Ronnie Cade to place number three. Appoint William Meredith to place number four. Appoint Lonnie Tipton to place number five. Lewisville Crime Control and Prevention District Board and Lewisville Fire Control, Prevention, and Emergency Medical Services District Board, reappoint Bob Troyer to place number two. Reappoint Ronnie Cade to place number three. Appoint Lonnie Tipton to place number five. Lewisville Local Government Corporation, reappoint Ronnie Cade to place number one. Reappoint Bob Troyer, place number two. Appoint Lonnie Tipton to place number three. Reappoint William Meredith to place number four. Reappoint TJ Gilmore to place number five. And that is it.
Counselmember Tipton, do you, do you second that list?
I second it.
All right, thank you. Counsel, we have a motion and a second. If you would please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. I do need to go back on item 10. We do need to clarify for the record the names for the appointment to the Steering Committee. Counselmember Meredith, would you mind?
Sure.
We just need to read those and, and get a motion and a second.
All right. Round number two, Lewisville 2035 Steering Committee applicants by generation.
Don't worry about by generation, just read the names.
Ray Bates, John Tohey, Sheila Robichaud Glaze, Diane McDonald, Trista Williford, Buddy Bonner, Erin Antatifa, Carrie Stafford, Sarah Hicks, Hami Aguero, Gail Wilson, Jen Wilder, Amy Puckett, Vinnie Patel, Jeremy Stafford, Joanne Johnson, Erin Jenske, Sophia Anwar, Jason Smith, Pralita Hansford, Andrew McFessel, Clifton Duingdara, Viviana Sanchez, Jason Purdy, Mitchell Kip, and Corey Rollins.
And this is the second round appointments? This is a motion to add those names as a second round appointments for the 2035 Steering Committee, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and I do need a second for that. I have a motion and a second. We'll go ahead and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you for that adjustment. Item G, reports. We have the, counsel, we're going to go ahead and do the director of reports and then I'm going to start with Councilmember Kelly and do council reports. First up, I have Director of Public Services, Aaron Russell.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The lake level, I'm sorry.
It's at 100% though, right?
So I do want to talk to you, good evening. I, I wanted to talk to you about the weekend of July 13th and 14th, where we had a stream of water main breaks and just give you an update on the outcome of those. So on Saturday, July 13th, we did experience a water main break on a 12-inch water line. Just to give you kind of a summary of events, the water, the water plant observed the tanks starting to drop. They did increase flow and were able to basically maintain the tank levels. So that indicated that we had a large water main break. The, the interesting part about that is in the area where it had to be because of the way it was affecting the tanks, we, we had very limited areas where water lines were not in streets. So it was strange to us that the water main break had not been reported. So when you're losing that much water, typically you have water going high in the air and you're making a big hole. So people report that very quickly. So we dispatched crews to start looking for that water main break. At one point, we were even exploring possibilities that the, that it was close enough to a sewer line, that the water was going directly in a manhole or something. But through just diligent efforts and scouring the, the maps, we were able to find that main break and it was actually on city of Lewisville site, our, our Timber Creek Lift Station. The reason we were on it, we had, it took us a little while to find it, is that is behind a, a security wall. So it's not visible, but the good work of our employees, we did find that. The great part about this whole process was we were able to, through the maintenance or the, the efforts of our water plant and our crews, the public never even knew this was going on because they didn't lose pressure, no one lost service. So we did get a crew out to repair that main break. Then after a long Saturday, Sunday, we had another main break on a 20-inch main in Castle Hills near the golf course. That one was particularly interesting because it was very close to a co-serv transformer. We immediately called co-serv out to make sure the area was safe because as you know, water and electricity don't exactly, aren't good partners. The Castle Hills residents, so the area does have two feeds. In addition to that 20-inch water line, there's a 12-inch that serves that area as well. So they did not lose service. However, when we shut that line down, they, there were some of the residents probably experienced some lower pressures, which we did notify ahead of actually turning that water line off. The only place that lost service was the clubhouse, the Castle Hills clubhouse. We did communicate with them ahead of time before we turned their water off. That, that leak was isolated successfully and has been repaired as well. And then just because it was so much fun Saturday and Sunday, we decided to continue the streak and have another leak on a 24-inch main on Monday. That one was located at Valley Ridge and 121. Unfortunately, with that leak, we did have several businesses that lost service when we shut the water main down, including QT, Republic Collections, U-Haul, and a car wash. That has since been restored as well. I do want to point out, this is an effort that takes multiple divisions working together within public services to not just have a, have a successful repair of the water line, but to really, our, our main focus is to limit the impact on the public. So the great success is that first one is no one, the public didn't even know it happened. And that's always our goal. So, you know, we led, the ULM crew really led the charge, the, the utility line maintenance led the charge, but that includes working with the water plant, coordinating how hard they're pumping to make sure that we maintain tank levels, even with the wastewater plant because we thought there was a possibility on that first one that, that the water was going down the sewer. Plant maintenance and then environmental quality, that's our group that goes in to make sure that we're, that we're, don't have minimized environmental impacts. And then if we do have environmental impacts, those get reported to TCEQ correctly. I do want to recognize Caitlin Heron, who is our utilities Assistant Director over utilities and environmental quality, did a great job, was really the, the field general through this process. But some other employees, a particular that I want to recognize, Greg Holman, who is our interim superintendent, so our, our utility, our, our utility line maintenance superintendent left for military leave. And so our interim superintendent has been on the job for, was about, about two weeks. So I gave him one job when, when we, when we pushed him, I said, don't let anything bad happen. I told him when we got back that it's okay because he made everything better. But Stephanie Christian is another, she is our interim foreman and she did a fantastic job just in the field supervising crews and taking charge of this situation. And I'll go down the list real quick. The Angel, Angel Montes, Corey Martinez, Darius Mitchell, Keith Owen, Austin Wade, Wayland Williams, all on ULM, and then environmental quality, Fred Harding, Ashley Meldrum, and then at the water plant, Eric Martinez, Alex Pham, David Roush, Tony Hawkins, and Cedric West from the wastewater plant. So it was a big team working together and it was honestly, wish it hadn't been on a weekend, but it was fun to be, to watch the team and be a part of that.
Greatly appreciated. No, it was a ton of hard work to, to get that all up and running and it's, it's awesome that we didn't have an uproar on social media. It was, it was pretty, pretty cool. So I appreciate everything that you guys do to keep the system together. Next up, we have city engineer David Salmon.
Well, I'm happy to report that the city has received a Highway Safety Improvement Program grant from TechDOT for construction of a traffic signal at FM 544 and Killian Middle School. With this type of grant, the recipient pays for and provides the design and then TechDOT actually bids and builds the signal. The estimated construction cost for the signal is $750,000. The construction funding will be available in fiscal year '27 with construction occurring in fiscal year '28. And so staff will be moving forward with the design contract and will be bringing that forward to the city council in the very near future. I did want to mention that this is the fourth HSIP grant that the city has received and I wanted to give credit to our traffic engineer for keeping up with the application cycle and for consistently submitting a successful applications.
That's great. Great news. It'll be awesome for the traffic in that area too. Next up, Director of Neighborhood Services and Inspection Services, Mr. Chris McGinn.
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to provide you an update on our property enhancement program and where things have moved towards since we started the program back in 2016. This is a grant that, that provides assistance to single-family residential homes with exterior repair renovations and sustainable improvements to their, to their home or their front yard. It's, it's really designed to renovate your, your, your neighborhood and it provides up to a 50% of the cost of the project. All homeowners are eligible, no matter their income, up to $1,000. And if a homeowner qualifies as low to moderate, they're eligible up to $5,000. So, so since we've started this program, just looking at total projects, the beginning of July, 405 projects have been completed and we have 42 projects in the works. So shout out to our, our, our grant specialist, Brian McGreen, for really pushing this, this program along. 48% of the applicants qualified as low to moderate income and 44% of those applicants are 62 years or older. Those projects mainly in three, three areas, projects for fences, 31%, 13% of those are windows, 12% are painting projects. But I think looking at the funds that have been allocated through this program says a lot about the city of Lewisville and what kind of city that we are. At this point in time, we've allocated over a million dollars out to the public, administered funds out to the public for these programs. And, you know, this has gone back out in, into the community and it's just really awesome to see, you know, how this, how this program has, this grant program has really progressed.
Well, I want to thank staff for, for continuing to keep that out and, and in front of people. And we were averaging 45 to 50 of these a year over the timeframe. And I remember when we first started this, this was, our, our goal was to be able to help our seniors, help people to age in place, be able to help people stay in their homes. I think it's, it's really important that we help provide a floor for folks so that we can prevent homelessness from occurring, which is, which is a big part of, I think, the conversation when we first started this. So I'm proud of staff for, for taking the ball and running with it. I'm proud of our code enforcement team for being able to use this as, as a carrot as opposed to just always using a stick. And I, I agree with you. It's, it's part of the culture of this city to figure out how we can, how we can provide those resources and help, you know, maintain the integrity of our neighborhoods and help people, you know, stay in the home that, that they probably lived in most of their life. So great job, staff. You guys, it's, it's a, it's an amazing testament to your work because we could just let it sit there and founder, it could, it could be challenging. But it's not, I have actually some close friends who were able to take advantage of the program a couple of years back and it's, it was a game changer for them and their property. So I appreciate you guys. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have reports, reports about items of community interest regarding which new action will be taken. Councilmember Kelly?
Sure. I'll start off here. So first, there is a tip a cop event. This is going to be at the Texas Roadhouse in Flower Mound. I believe this is to help raise funds for Special Olympics, is that right, Chief Rollins? So we'll be out there for dinner on, on, I guess it's Wednesday? Yeah, the 23rd. Fantastic. So I look forward to that. The, I also want to say, I've, I've been the recipient of a couple of, some of the city services here recently. So one, I, I actually live in the zone over where the Lady Lake pipe burst. And you're right, nobody, nobody even, sort of seeing the trucks out there, nobody knows. nobody, nobody, sort of seen the trucks out there, nobody noticed anything, so we had no traffic water pressure. Um, I think the club may even have been closed for some of that out as well, so I don't even think they were really affected. So fantastic work, so I'm gonna acknowledge going up the chain, 'cause certainly acknowledge going down the chain, but certainly, Aaron, you did a fantastic job. Your teams, teams like that don't just happen, they're built, right? So, and Gina McGrath did a fantastic job as well. Um, Claire, I know you were probably in the loop, but you didn't feel the need to jump in, 'cause it was just being handled, so that's fantastic. And then, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the awesome work from, I think it was Fire Station Two, helped us out on a couple weeks ago, so I really appreciate that, and MCL did a fantastic job as well, so I just wanna call those out. And I think that's, uh, everything I have.
Thanks, sir.
My, my thunder's been stolen. I was, I was going to thank our public work staff for, I mean, I, I'm noticing a trend here. It always seems to happen, um, multiple breaks on more than one line, and it always, it's either at night or over the weekend, sometimes on a holiday weekend. Um, you know, you guys are just incredible. We, y'all are so very appreciative, and I, uh, you know, I know it's already been said a few times, but I just wanted to echo that sentiment. Thank you so much.
Counselmember Tipton?
I have nothing.
Counselmember K? Counselmember Mary?
Yeah, mayor, I've got some library activities for the week. Teen Auto Makers, Auto Mae Plus Makers for teens 13 to 18 only, Thursday, July 24th, 6:00 to 7:30 PM at the Hive Maker Space, no registration is required. Drag, Dragonstone Castle Party for ages 3 to 5, Friday, July 25th, 10 to 11 AM Bennett Program Room, and a ticket is required, and that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Counselmember Toria?
Uh, yes, I have a number of Louisville Grand Theater activities coming up in the next couple of weeks. Uh, first of all, performances, uh, Dracula, A Comedy of Terrors, presented by Scratch Theater Company, that will be July 31st through August 2nd, with two shows on August 2nd. And then Black Box Songwriter Series, Tish Hinoza, presented by the city of Louisville on August 10th. And activities, conversations with artists, uh, What Were They Thinking?, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville on July 27th, and then the songwriting workshop with Tish Hinoza, presented by the, the city of Louisville on August 9th. And finally, some exhibitions currently going on, uh, Meaning Through Memory, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville, through August 9th, and All Natural, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville, also through August 9th.
Thank you, sir. City attorneys? City secretary, you good? Awesome. City manager? Nothing?
I just wanna say how great a team is when you can actually go on vacation and not worry at all and know that they've got it, so, thanks, guys.
I did wanna discuss water main breaks while you were out of town. There seems to be a correlation-
There's a pattern, I know, I know. It's because things fall apart when I'm not here, but I didn't wanna say that. I'm just kidding.
Um, I, I have the privilege of, uh, going down to Austin tomorrow and Wednesday. Uh, there is a new, uh, special session. Uh, I'll be, uh, down there advocating for our positions. Uh, they're, they're having conversations about, um, uh, limiting our local voice and, uh, limiting some of our, um, ways that we actually spend or can, uh, collect revenues, uh, for the city. So, so again, um, they paint with a very broad brush, brush down there. Um, we are very conservative, um, here to, uh, I'll be down there to remind them of, uh, you know, when a city does it right, they shouldn't be punished, so we'll, we'll continue to advocate for everything that we can. Uh, with that, there is no closed session tonight, so there is no further action to be taken on tonight's agenda, so we stand adjourned. 8:13.